This one here, meeting adjourned.
Oh, that's funny. Too many clocks.
I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 10th, regular meeting. And we'll have a special meeting following this tonight, and you all remind me again. So don't do the same thing. So would you please first join Vice Mayor Pizzillo in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Father, as we go about doing the work in the business of the city, please provide wisdom as we make these tough decisions for the betterment of the whole. Also, for all that are here tonight, and all those serving across the country, here and abroad, please make sure you keep them out of harm's way, all here, safe access home, in thy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And we are all here at the diocese evening, so let's start with the communication. We have one tonight. It is a presentation of the activities of the Moving Wall event held October 2nd through October 6, 2014. Jerry Guyer, Chief of Police, will present, and his guest.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back on October 2nd, we had a very special event come to the city of Goodyear, particularly the community of Australia, called the Moving Wall. And we're honored tonight to present a summary or recap of that event to you. And what's really fitting about tonight is we're able to do this on the eve of Veterans' Day, which makes it more special. So tonight, I want to introduce Lisa Lunska. Lisa is the Community Manager of Australia, and she has been kind enough to come here tonight and do the presentation for you.
Thank you and welcome. We appreciate it.
Hi, thank you for inviting me here. And I'm going to give you just a brief of some of the facts of the Moving Wall first. This was brought to us about two years ago from one of our residents, John Compton. In that two years, the Moving Wall contacted us at the beginning of this year and gave us the date, so we basically had less than eight months to prepare for this event. We couldn't have done it without our partnership with Newland Communities, the City of Goodyear, Luke Air Force Base, Fighter Country Partnership, and the Australia Facilitation Team. That included Ed Blanchard, who's a resident, and also a board member with Fighter Country Partnership, John Compton, who's a resident, Tim Riley, who's a resident and with the Veteran Pride Battalion, U.S. Navy SEAL cadets, and all of the staff from CCMC, Newland Communities, who put so many hours into this event, both before, during, and after, some of which are here with us this evening. We had approximately 50 sponsors for this event, raised over $30,000 in cash and $25,000 in materials, labor, food, and water. We distributed over 300 tons of granite that were spread over 1.5 acres of land. We brought in 60 trees, both native and nursery, hundreds of plants that were planted in pots and staged throughout to create a park, lighting, staging, seating, signage. It was a huge event. And of course, the very popular hospitality suite that we had for our over 250 volunteers that came and helped us during the event over the five days. So it was a five-day event running 24 hours a day. There were approximately 10,000 to 15,000 visitors from all over the valley in many different states, and over 1,000 students that came from the Buckeye Liberty and Abendale School districts. We were extremely happy with the turnout of this event and thankful for all of those that assisted and participated to make it successful. We'd now like to share a video that we put together of some photos from the event.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. (Music) Sometimes I think about America, about her struggles through the years. I think of people who did what they had to do with the strength to work through their Sometimes I think about America, about her future and her past. I know I'm blessed to be living in liberty in a land where freedom will last. For the heroes, for the patriots, for the soldiers, for all the pioneers. I will always be an American, and I'll always cry American tears. Sometimes I think about America, about her people's legacy. I wonder if they knew that what they had to do would be known throughout this story. Sometimes I think about America, about her pain along the way. I know it had to be for our democracy, for the world we live in today. For the heroes, for the patriots, for the soldiers, for all the pioneers. I will always be an American, and I'll always cry American tears. Always cry. For the heroes, for the patriots, for the soldiers, for all the pioneers, pioneers. I will always be an American, and I'll always cry American tears. Always cry. I'll always be. I will cry American tears. I know the council's going to want to comment. I just want to thank Lisa and the entire team. I was blessed to be the final speaker on the last day. And I said, and I do say again, this was the honor and the parade they never received. But I didn't have any idea of the other days that took place, so today was the first time that I knew that. And that takes a lot of cooperation and a lot of work and a lot of love and devotion for to do that, so thank you. Comment, Council? Councilman Stip?
You know, this is the third time in three different states I have seen the Moving Wall, in addition to the memorial in Washington. And to Lisa and your entire team, I have to tell you, this was by far the... I struggle as a guy to say most beautiful, but it was really very, very well done. The whole veteran park that you created as a result of setting the wall up was really very moving and, I think, was a true honor to what the wall represents and the men and women who both are on the wall and those that served. So thank you for doing that and doing such a wonderful job at setting it up.
Councilman Campbell?
Well, I had the honor of being at the very first planning meeting for the Moving Wall a couple of years ago. And I want to tell you the extraordinary leadership that Lisa did is what brought the Moving Wall together to Australia. It was an idea of bringing it to the community, but Lisa made it work, and she got the right people together to form the partnerships. So we really... I really want to thank you, Lisa, for that, because without you being behind it 100%, we would not have been able to bring it here. And I know how hard it was to coordinate everything, and your entire team was amazing. And I want to thank you very much, because this was such a wonderful event for our city. Thank you.
Councilman Osborne?
You know, a great deal of thanks have been given, and it's so very heartfelt and true. And I actually had, after our last meeting, I walked down there to tell Lisa that I had actually thought of her this weekend when we were at our retreat. And I said, you know, it's so wonderful to see our community stepping up to bring outstanding things like this to our city. And you gathered together, and it was a great organization and a great, wonderful feeling to be able to recognize all of our veterans. And I thank you, Lisa, I thank you to Australia Mountain Ranch and just everyone, our staff, everyone that was involved with putting this together, Fighter Country Partnership and all the sponsors. This was a wonderful thing, and I hope these kinds of types of events we can continue to have and reflect on that brings our communities together.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Lortano?
Lisa, I also want to thank you in Australia for bringing that up to Australia as a resident up there. It was absolutely beautiful. Being from a generation that was just being born at the end of the Vietnam War, we don't have the same memories as the mayor does and Wally and having spouses. Having the opportunity to take our children there, and many of the children in the schools may never get the chance to go to DC and see the wall, but having them learn that all the people on that wall, it was amazing. And the people, the volunteers who had the information about the war and about the people, it was very touching. I think the kids, it was a valuable lesson and just an honor to talk to the veterans. I know we, as a family, just selected some people's names, and we looked up their stories online, and I think it was a great teaching moment, and I am just so honored that you brought it to our community. And thank you and all the sponsors for all your hard work.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
There's not a whole much more to add, except thank you, Lisa, and thank you all of your volunteers. Yeah, I guess without getting the age, I was kind of one that kind of remembers that and actually lost a few good friends during that war. So again, that's what makes a community, a great community, bringing everybody together. And again, thank you and for all those that participated in putting it on. Thank you very much.
You know, one last word. When the wall was designed, we happened to be living in Washington, DC at the time, and it was very controversial. Oh, yeah. And yeah, it was, remember that. And I mean, when it was finally built, and then it was the wall, and then people talked about, oh, it's just names. But the first people that walked up there and found the names and traced the names, and now it's become really probably one of the most important symbols of the war, of different conflicts, because it was such a conflict among the people, the government, and the military. And so they never got their time, did they? No, they didn't. So thank you. Okay? Can't talk anymore. Let's go. Thank you very much. Thanks, Lisa. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Do we have any this evening?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? All right, let's go on to the consent agenda. And will the city clerk please read the consent agenda, item 6.1, 6.2 by Titeloni?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes of a regular meeting and a special meeting held on October 6, 2014. Item 6.2, adopt resolution number 14-1673, authorizing the release and relinquishment of two drainage channel easements located within the final plat for Safeway at Canyon Trails, number 2618.
Thank you. Does anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, could I please have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and I heard a blend over here, but I'm going to give it to Councilman Holman, did the second. Roll call vote, please. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's go to business, and the first item is to consider a Series 12 liquor license for the Haymaker Restaurant. Sue Brungart, Deputy City Manager, will present.
Deputy City Clerk, Mayor? Good evening, Mayor and Council. You promoted me again.
Did I get it right?[1056.13][1056.13](Laughter).
I'm happy to be able to present a new Series 12 liquor license for the Haymaker Restaurant. The Haymaker is located at 1800 North Litchfield Road, and that's just northwest of the intersection of Litchfield Road and McTow Road. The Haymaker opened for business in October. It's locally owned and operated, and this location previously housed another restaurant with a Series 12 liquor license. So the Haymaker is exercising their right to sell alcohol under the interim permit process until they receive their liquor license. The applicant also owns another Haymaker Restaurant, which is located in Peoria. The applicant, Joseph Lucidi, is present in the audience if council has any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, let's go on. Could I now have a motion, please, to approve the request for the Joseph Lucidi owner and agent of the JTLZ LLC Doing Business as a Haymaker Restaurant Company for a new Series 12 liquor license, number 1207A038. The Haymaker Restaurant Company is located at 1800 North Litchfield Road, Goodyear. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman, and I second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion.
I have a question, please.
Yes, Councilman Campbell?
My question is, if the liquor license does not go with the restaurant, right? So Caballeros has their own separate liquor license, and if they have closed, so a new owner has come in and changed the name, so he needs his own liquor license, is this correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a brand-new license for that one?
This is a brand-new liquor license, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thanks very much.
Vice Mayor?
Is the owner here?
Yes, I see him.[1191.23][1191.23](Laughter). Welcome this evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Been there, great place. Welcome to Goodyear.
Thank you very much. Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Thank you very much for saying the prayer. That meant a lot.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I thank Joanne Hen.
Councilman Osborne?
Oh, actually, I was going to say, Joseph, stand up.[1215.15][1215.15](Laughter). I wanted everybody to see you, in case they hadn't.
Thank you. We love being a part of your community. It's fantastic.
Anybody else? Councilman Stip?
Well, I have to echo Councilman, or the Vice Mayor, that been there a number of times, even took out-of-town guests already. You know, we appreciate the ability for you to quickly move in and fill a void in our community that we needed filled, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Well, I guess I'm the last to speak. Thank you. You know, we've been there, my husband and I, and we do enjoy the words you have on the wall and the tribute you pay to the United States, and that's always welcome, so we really appreciate that. So I think you're really a first in the restaurants to do that, and so that's admirable. Thank you.
And Mayor, the Goodyear White Tanks Rotary will now be meeting at the Haymaker at 7:00 AM every Thursday morning.
Wow, very good.
So thank you for letting us come there for breakfast.
Absolutely. We'd love to have you.
Great. All right, I think we've had enough discussion. Everybody ready? So let's go ahead. Thank you very much for coming up. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right, could I please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Okay. The next item on business is a public hearing to consider the Sun DS Farms PAD Land Use Plan. And so I'm... Would you like, wait here. Got that? Okay. Open for a public hearing. Joe Schmidt, Planning Manager, will present. Joe?
Mayor and Council? Can I have the presentation, please? Tonight, we're going to talk about disposing of a fire truck.[1341.26][1341.26](Laughter).
Wrong one.
In a minute.
A one-slide presentation? Did I just see that?
Yeah.[1347.26][1347.26](Laughter).
Can we have the other presentation?
We want a yellow paper on that.
It was a yellow fire truck, so that counts.
Why don't we wait? We'll send someone out to get this taken care of.
Joe?
Joe?
They're checking in the back right now.
Okay, thank you.
Here's our yellow paper.[1408.33][1408.33](Laughter). Thank you.
Short presentation and a yellow paper.
You did request it.
He did. Councilman Stip did ask for it. So here it is.[1416.15][1416.15](Laughter).
A little bright.
Yeah. Now, see, this is what we talked about, that brightness, kind of...
Well, I guess I'm not the only person that has trouble with electronic equipment.
No.[1431.01][1431.01](Laughter).
Well, I have a map. You want mine to put on Elmo? I mean, I printed this out. Does that help? You know, it might. A black and white one might show up, Joe. I've got the... Here, take mine.
Oh, he's not...
Maybe Elmo doesn't work.
Like an electron microscope.
Well, I guess we're all right, because we started the public meeting on time.
Uh-oh. Here comes the cow mooing. No. Scream. Yeah, exactly. I'm one that's done some training, I see. I see a virus.
Push the other button.[1470.76][1470.76](Laughter).
What are you doing? I got it. Use my maps.
Uh-oh.
Zoomed in so far you can't see it.
It looks like...
Like a microscope.
Yeah, looks like a hair. Looks like CSI.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Who's been playing with the machine while we were gone?
There you go.
Whoa!
Hey, Christian!
They saw light. Okay, here we go, Joe.
We have this on our iPad.
Where's a 13-year-old kid when you need one to check out? Thank you, Christian. So Sun DS Farms is a parcel containing 160 acres at the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye Road and Australia Parkway, and also at the northwest corner of Elwood Street and Australia Parkway. It's bordered on the east by the Wood Corporate Campus, that's currently undeveloped, to the south by the Australia Crossings Business Park and Arizona Galvanizing, and to the west by single-family homes in the Saraville Village Community, and to the north by single-family homes in the Australia Vista Development. The final PAD was approved on the project in 2008, which provided for 54 acres of low-density residential, which is depicted in the light yellow, bright yellow. 31 acres of low-medium-density residential, which is the parcel here. Six acres of parks and open space, and centrally located in the development. 10 acres of office on either side of this intersection. 41 acres of business park, and 18 acres of neighborhood commercial. A conceptual lotting plan at that time showed 153 traditional single-family lots in the areas which are now referenced as A and C in the revised PAD document, and 213 small lot and alley-loaded product and neighborhood commercial, and now is more designated as The PAD amendment that's under consideration tonight proposes to eliminate the neighborhood and office land use designations that were previously designated at the northeast and east portion of the site, provide 68 acres of low-density residential in these parcels A and C, 39 acres of low-medium-density residential, alternative lot flex development overlay in the area E, that's parcel B that's cross-hatched, and 47 acres of commerce center in the blue areas, and six acres of park centrally located to the residential portion of the site. The new conceptual lotting plan shows the low-density parcels A and C will be developed with 215 traditional single-family lots similar in size to the lots in the adjacent residential neighborhoods, ranging in size from 50 by 110 to 60 by 115 to 70 by 120, and they would be developed at a density within the 2 to 4 unit per acre range. The low-medium-density parcel B also can be developed with traditional single-family lots, but also has the flexibility to accommodate alternative lot designs, including such product as Zlots, Zero Lot Line, alley-loaded product, and cluster or court home development. The overall density within parcel B is expected to be within 10% of 4 to 6 units per acre, even though portions of the site may be developed at a higher density. The total number of dwelling units within the project is capped at 406, which will limit the maximum density achievable in parcel B. The conceptual lotting plan... The conceptual lotting plan, as it's shown, depicts what it would look like, developed with 152 50-foot-wide lots at a density of 3.66 units per acre. But it could be developed with up to 200 units and stay within the density limits of the low-medium-density residential designation. The exact housing product type would be established at the time of the preliminary plat review and would be checked for conformance with the city's design guidelines and with the development standards and architectural character images contained within the PAD. Likewise, the total open space will be evaluated for conformance with the overall park and open space provided in the project, which is depicting it as having 23.37 acres. The Commerce Center designation along the south portion of the site is similar to the Business Park designation from the original PAD document. It extends to the area within the 60 LDN noise contour for the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and the area between the residential parcels and the industrial development on the south side of Elwood. The 60-degree LDN noise contour runs at a diagonal, roughly in the alignment of that street, which is the reason why it's more appropriate for non-residential use. The Commerce Center designation would allow light industrial uses from the I-1 district is supplemented by certain C-2 district uses, which include service and repair-type uses. A 25-foot-wide landscape buffer is proposed along the west boundary of the Commerce Center parcel at the southwest corner of the site, and a 40-foot-wide landscape tract is present in the Saraville Village subdivision on the other side of this property line. Likewise, a landscape buffer of 30 to 50 feet wide is proposed along the north side of the Commerce Center parcel, between it and the residential development proposed within parcel C. The amended PAD was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting of August 20th and recommended for approval by a vote of 5-0, with five members present. Due to the need to clarify some of the stipulations, the public hearing for the PAD amendment was delayed until this evening. All the publication and notice requirements for this public hearing have been met. And to date, the only calls that we've received express support for eliminating the neighborhood commercial at the southwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Lower Buckeye Road. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff have recommended approval of the PAD as amended, subject to the stipulations that are listed in your agenda material. I'm available for questions if the council has any, and the applicant is represented tonight by Mr. Ed Bull, who is also available to make a presentation or answer questions as desired by the council.
Thank you very much, Joe. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? I think we have Mr. Bull coming forward. Good evening, Ed.
Mayor members of the council, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, representing Sundias Farms. I'll be happy to speak, have spoken to. If you all are comfortable with Joe's very thorough presentation, so are we. We've had the pleasure of being here with recommendations for approval, no known opposition, and stipulations that we're fine with. We think it's the right move for this PAD to get unneeded commercial off of that corner. We're proud of the open space and other things that's in this development, and would ask your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. They may after I close the meeting, after I close the public hearing, so, okay. So I'm gonna close this public hearing. And would the city clerk please read ordinance 14-1310 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 14-1310, amending the Sundias Farms LLC final planned area development to eliminate the neighborhood commercial land use, combining the prior office and business parkland uses into a commerce parkland use, and to amend the locations of the various land uses within the land use plan, and amend the land use plan to allocate a larger portion of the property to residential land uses, and to revise the development standards applicable to the various land uses reflected in the land use plan, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Laura Tannen, and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. Councilman Laura Tannen?
I just wanna say, I'm very excited to see some density going into this area of the city, and I like how the changes have been made, and hopefully that'll bring some houses, 'cause there's some businesses just down in that shopping center there, and hopefully help spur some development around the stadium. So I really like how it's been done.
Good comments. Next, Councilman Osborne.
I too appreciate the density. I know this is something that we were looking for to be around the ballpark. I also like the layout of the development. I had one question. It does look like we have a good deal of open space, especially for the Zlots and the smaller home plans, but I just wanna make sure that there's not a lot, at least on this picture. I just wanna make sure that we are allowing for plenty of high-and-dry open space and not retention, since these are smaller lots. I see a lot of, you know, darkened areas, so you can't really judge by percent on this picture. So if staff feels that it's, you know, there's enough high-and-dry, then I'll feel better about that.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Osborne. Of course, at this stage of the development process, it's, it's, it's a best guess as to how much retention will be placed where.
Okay.
But as we go through the preliminary plat process, is that something we'll look at to make sure that the, there is a sufficient amount of high-and-dry?
Besides that, it looks good. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
I have two questions. I read that Planning and Zoning passed this August 20th. Was there a concern with it, because it took so long to come to us? Forty days for it to be heard by us?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell. There were some concerns as it went through its final review before coming to the council about items that were in the PAD that maybe weren't clear, as clear as they could be. And some of the stipulations needed to be revised to be, again, more clear. So it just, it took a little while, and then we had to republish and, before we could reschedule it. But the applicant was very understanding and cooperative in that.
You had to republish it that, before it could come to us? It didn't go back to Planning and Zoning, did it?
No, it didn't go back to Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Where did the roundabout come in? It looks like this is a roundabout.
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Campbell. It was proposed by the applicant and was considered an appropriate traffic control measure at that location.
Do you want the applicant to talk about it, Mr. Bull?
Well, yeah, because I'm opposed to roundabouts.
Well, why don't you come up rather than, why don't we give them a chance to address it? Why?
Okay.
If there's anybody from the group would like to address why you decided to do a roundabout, the advantages of it for you?
Kevin Cougar may want to backstop me in case I don't quite use the right planning lingo.
Yeah, I couldn't see Kevin. He's hiding behind that pole. That's why I couldn't see. I would've called him up, Ed.
I never realized that column was quite that big till I sat behind it. So I'm still very safe in here. Joe was absolutely correct, in that the roundabout was a part of the design that when we were working on this amendment, we submitted. Staff did not cram it down our throat. It's something that, as we tried to polish and modernize this PAD through the amendment process, to us seemed to make sense as a way to keep traffic moving through that area, yet at the same time do meaningful traffic calming at what is really, in that location, a kind of a Y configuration, where we have not only a roadway intersection occurring, but also we have different land uses occurring as we transition from one area to the other. As we're looking at the location of that... I believe this is the area that...
I've got it, yeah. Yeah.
I too have not been quick to become a believer in roundabouts. That may have to do with, I'm just not used to them. But as we do continue to have more and more of them in the valley, and people become more and more used to them, it seems like, for the most part, they become more, have become more receptive, at least in areas where I've had the opportunity to work, and allow traffic to continue to move, rather than have simply, in this location, what would be a T-intersection. I don't know if it's a 51-49 call as to which is the best way to go. We thought it made sense in this location, but I don't think we'll fall on our sword over whether or not that remains a roundabout, if it's critical to the council.
I'm just concerned about it, because we do have one up in Estrella, and there are folks that aren't real happy about having it up there. That's the only one that's in this city. And I, I, I am a no vote if we continue to put in roundabouts, because I don't think we're there yet. But I'm only one of seven, but I just think, because you're gonna have a commerce center there eventually, right? You're going to put something eventually.
Yes.
And I just think that if you have a roundabout, I just don't, I just don't think, if I lived there, I would not wanna have to go a roundabout to get into my home, or to get out. Because if I get out and I'm going left to go to work, then I've gotta go all the way around the roundabout to go out to hit Pebble Creek Parkway. That's all I was thinking of, so.
Okay.
I mean, Estrella Parkway. What did I say? Pebble Creek?
Of course, we're always...
I am so sorry.
Campbell, sorry about that. We're always, you know, they always can prove us wrong on that with studies they've done.
Sorry.
So I will say, I've seen a number of studies. And it depends on what time of day I go up, to up the hill, whether or not I like it or not. And I think what it does do, and I think probably people who like to go faster than what the speed limit says, sometimes deters them from that. So I think, I think that could be some of the complaints is, because they go up that hill pretty fast. Yes, Councilman Holman?
Well, I just wanted to mention that we may not have it as a surface street, but more and more parking lots in Goodyear are having roundabouts. As a matter of fact, we have one, and I get turned right out here in this complex, we have a roundabout.
Yes, we know.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, it's the more people get used to it.
It's kind of one of those things, it is. Councilman Osborne?
Well, I don't think that that's something that should make or break this development. I personally think that it allows traffic to continually flow, and this is not on a major intersection. You know, the one up in Estrella is right on Estrella, so that is certainly more of a...
It's got Cotton Lane coming in, yeah. Cotton Lane Bridge coming into it, too.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, there's, there's a difference in that area, but this should be just fine with the way traffic flows. That's my opinion.
Vice Mayor?
I have no problem with it.
Okay. Councilman Stip?
You know, it's interesting that this comes before us tonight after our discussion over the weekend on our property that fronts Estrella Parkway. We two talked about removing the commercial frontage off of our property that, that we have north of this location, and relocating the commercial or using it into a, putting it in a different form on our piece of property. So it's very, very timely that this comes before us. I appreciate the change. I think we've had a number of discussions on this council in the last four or five months about what's really happening with commercial. And I'm glad to see that some commercial was retained. I think that, that's important for us, and it... I would hope one day that it would be developed, but I'm not so sure that it, that it would be, especially farther down, up against the residential, but I like the changes, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? No, appreciate them. I'm, you know, I'm just happy to see this come forward. You know, it's, it's nice to see that development is moving on. And so, thank your clients for us. It's, it's great. And we look forward to actually, the first time something's built in that area, so.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to 7.3. No, I didn't vote yet. Alright, could I have a motion, please, and a second?
We've got the motion.
You did that. I had Laura, okay, who'd I have? 'Cause I didn't write it down. Alright, who'd I have?
Councilmember Laura Tannen would, did the motion, and the second was Councilmember Osborne.
Alright, so, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Laura Tannen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne? Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-1.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I apologize for the audiovisual mix-up.
I'm sorry. You'll have, I couldn't hear. What?
I said I thanked you, and then I apologized for the audiovisual mix-up, so.
You never have to apologize as mayor. She has mishaps all the time up here at the DAS. So you just relax yourself. We finally got to see the picture, and we got to have the conversation, and I know it isn't as, you know, business decor, but we get through it, Joe, so don't worry. Thank you very much.
I will recuse myself from this next one, 'cause I'm an adjunct professor at Estrella Mountain Community College.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, I am too an adjunct professor for Rio Salada, which is Maricopa County Community College, and I currently teach, so I will also recuse myself.
Alright, fine.
Mayor? I am still on staff at Estrella Mountain Community College and must recuse myself.
Okay, that's very interesting. Okay, alright. The last item, alright, the last item, 7.3, is consider approving and ratifying the execution of an agreement providing for a donation, all over a donation. Okay, of a 2002 Pumper Fire Engine. And you're not Paul, so would you announce your name?
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Tom Cole. I'm deputy fire chief for your fire department. The resolution before you, as you mentioned, provides for the donation of a surplus Pierce dash pumper, it's a 2002 Pierce dash pumper, to Estrella Mountain Community College. It's to the college district to be utilized at Estrella Mountain Community College. Goodyear, City of Goodyear, Goodyear Fire Department's had a very robust agreement with Estrella Mountain Community College Cooperative Agreement, known as the Education Services Agreement, where cooperatively, we provide at low or no cost training to the members of the fire department. This is an opportunity to enhance that agreement by donating a piece of equipment we no longer utilize. Mr. Flynn could elaborate on the matrix they use to determine which pieces of equipment are rotated out of our, out of our fleet, and this one has served its operational lifetime. So we're happy to be able to enhance and support this agreement. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the dean of the Occupational Education School, Dr. Heather Weber, and also the director of the Fire Science Program, Dr. Jeff Thomas, representing Estrella Mountain Community College.
Thank you both for being here this evening.
The additional opportunities it provides is the cooperative training that we do together. So this pumper will still train Goodyear firefighters, Goodyear fire cadets. So it'll be out of our fleet, it'll belong to the college, but it will still provide an opportunity for our people to use it and to benefit from it being available to the college, so. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? So would the city clerk please read Resolution 14-1672 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 14-1672, approving and ratifying the execution of an agreement providing for the donation of the city's surplus 2002 Pierce dash Pumper Fire Engine to Maricopa Community College's district for use in the Estrella Community College Fire Science Program.
I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
I had a motion from Councilman Osborne, and a second from Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion.
Well, my discussion is, we lost half of our council.
Did you not hear? They had to recuse themselves.
All three of them?
All three of them. So it's just us.
Do we have a majority? Can we vote?
Yeah.
I'm getting a nod from the lawyer.
Well, then maybe I shouldn't ask my question. Well, my question is, we don't need this vehicle for parts, do we? I mean, we're always parting out our vehicles and...
That's right. We've got Mr. Flynn coming up here.
Councilmember Campbell, I'll...
We'll let him take that question.
Maybe we're not gonna use any more Pierce vehicles. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, members of council, no. There are no pieces remaining on the Pierce truck that we would utilize in the system. We concur from a fleet perspective that the truck would be salvaged.
So we don't have any more Pierce? So, we don't have any more Pierce vehicles in our inventory?
We do, but we would not use components from this truck in order to do those repairs. This truck, we've deemed that this truck has reached the end of its useful life for our purposes, the educational purpose that it would serve at the college. Probably a great way for it to continue its use, but we would not use it as a frontline apparatus, nor would we use it for spare parts.
Because it has too much miles and okay. Can it be driven?
Yes. It's
It works?
It remains roadworthy today, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other comments? Councilman Holman?
Yeah, I'd just like to see a truck used in this way because they need something for the training. It's a very, I think it's a very pragmatic, and I applaud the partnership.
Councilman Osborne?
Well, no.
No, I just, as a mayor, want to say I think it's a terrific idea. We always promote education. We always talk about education. We're always saying, you know, we're a city, can't do anything, can't give money, can't do this. We can give a fire truck, and we can see really positive results.[1343.67]